There might be someone else.
Can you hear this? I'm going to go on three to try to hear the board real quick. I apologize, thank you.
He messaged I ain't got no, he don't. Rick, Rick's getting on the phone.
Baby. Huh? Baby.
I meant to go tell Mark it's not for sure, huh? Colorado. He answered the first time, I said we'll call you back.
Hi, do you bring training up?
All circuits are big.
We're about to forget about.
First truck.
Hey. Hey, Brandon's trying to call you from this other phone, you hear it on your cellphone? Oh. Well, you can hear me now, but I'm gonna hang up and he's gonna call you as soon as he rings answering. Bye bye. Hello. Hello, sir, we got you now, can you hear us?
Yes, sir.
Alright, you're on.
Alright.
Alright, it's six thirty past, we'll go ahead and get started. Opening session prayer will be given by Mitch Stone Sipher, the Pledge of Allegiance will be given by William Abson. We have the Father, we just thank for this day, we thank for the many blessings you've bestowed upon us. But we ask tonight as we start this meeting that you just guide us with your wisdom and your knowledge, Lord. We ask, Father, that you would just bless the school district, the state, and our nation. But we just give you the many blessings and praise you for all that you do for us and just give you the glory and the honor in Jesus' precious name, Lord, amen.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, approval of minutes from the November twenty twenty one meeting. Those were emailed out in packets, need a motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion by Miss Alice Reed.
Second.
Second by Bruce Hudgens, all in favor? Uh, opposed. Motion carries. Any additions or deletions to the proposed agenda? Alright, we'll move to item six, approval of the December fourteenth twenty twenty one meeting agenda. Motion by Wayne Taylor. Second by Mitch Stone Sipher, all in favor? Uh, opposed. Motion passes. Executive action items, number one, approval of Livingston Academy bathroom renovation bid. Uh, to cookable kitchen sales at thirty-six thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars was the only bid. And number two, approval of A.H. Roberts Elementary School HVAC units installation bid to cookable heating coolant at sixty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars. And those, that was the lowest bid for those. So, under executive action, we need a motion to approve those. Motion by Mike Gilpatrick. Second by Dolph Stowe, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Passes. Uh, consent agenda items, uh, we'll read through all these letters of resignation from the following. Amy Jolly, Reach Academy, Keith Parker, Livingston Academy, and Jeremy McClure, it says Hillham, but it's actually Livingston Academy. Uh, number two, Wilson basketball team trip to UT Knoxville, uh, November twenty-sixth twenty twenty-one. Number three, uh, fiscal year twenty-two IDEA Part B revision number two. Four, uh, fiscal year twenty-two consolidated administration revision one. Number five, fiscal year twenty-twenty-two consolidated administration revision two. Number six, fiscal year twenty-twenty-two Title I revision number two. Number seven, fiscal year twenty-two Title II revision number three. Number eight, fiscal year twenty-two Title IV revision number two. Number nine, fiscal year twenty-two Title V original budget. Number ten, fiscal year twenty-two S R two point O revision number one. And eleven, fiscal year twenty-two twenty-first CCLC remaining funds grant. And, uh, talk to Crystal and all those are just balancing line items. Uh, there was one thing, the Title V funding from the state, the Title V went away. So, when that funding went away, it got separated to all these other budgets, so we had to make sure they, those balanced. Then they came back, said there was a carryover in Title V, so that's why the Title V originals back on there was that carryover on there, so. Any other updates, Crystal?
I don't think so, much of all any questions?
Need a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
I'm moving to business.
Motion by Mitch Stone Sipher, second by Wayne Taylor. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, on the new business, number one, consider approval of the following board policies as recommended by T S B A. Four point two oh nine, alternative credit options. Five point three oh two, sick leave. Five point three oh three, personal and professional leave. Five point three oh six, military leave. Five point seven oh one, substitute teachers. Five point eight oh one, director of schools recruitment and selection. Six point three oh four one, Title IX and sexual harassment. Six point three oh five, student concerns. And six point five oh oh, special education students. Need a motion to approve those policies?
I make that motion.
Motion by Bruce Hudgens?
Second.
Second by Mike Gilpatrick, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, number two, consider granting tenure for the following. Brittany Rooker, Livingston Middle School is recommended by Doug Smith, principal. Jody McDonald, Livingston Academy is recommended by Richard Melton, principal. Allison Lacy, Prashina Mullins, and Rachel Ramsey. Richmond Elementary is recommended by Julie Poston, principal. Need a motion? Motion by Mike Gilpatrick? Second by William Abson, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, congratulations. If you want to say anything. Okay, um, Dr. Holman, go ahead.
Yeah, we have something we'd like to present to you and I'll ask y'all to come up here in a second. But I'd just like for everybody to know that this is a, this is an effective, good group of, of teachers that we are thankful and happy to have, uh, in our system. Really, and I want you to know how proud we are of each one of you. And it amazes me that some of you, I remember when you were born, and I've had some of you in classes, uh, when we were little, and, uh, I mean, it, you all do make me feel quite old tonight. Brittany, Brittany, if you'll come out, Brittany Rooker? Let's see, do we want pictures made with the principal?
Sure, yes.
And Mr. Smith, you can come up as well? Do we do a, a school picture? Ms., Ms. Jody McDonald, you'll come up? Now, Richard, uh, Mr. Melton couldn't be here tonight. He gave me something really nice to say about you. Let, let me find it right here and I'll, I'll bring it to you. Since he couldn't be here. He said, uh, Ms. Jody McDonald was previously tenured in Overton County. Upon her return, she has successfully completed a full school year as U.S. History and Economics teacher. Uh, I am confidently, I confidently recommend and, uh, the reinstatement of her tenure as teacher at Livingston Academy. And then at Richmond, we have Allison Lacy. And Sheena Mullins. And Rachel Ramsey. And here's Ms. Poston.
One, two, three, and one more time, one, two, three.
Let's get one picture of, of all, just the teachers up here, if you don't mind. Let's give them one more hand.
Congratulations again. Uh, moving on to item three, uh, consider approval of clinical affiliation agreement between Volunteer State Community College and Overton County School District. Need a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Miss Alice Reed. Second by Dolph Stowe, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number four, consider approval of agreement between Putnam Kennedy Board of Education and Overton Kennedy Board of Education for services to students of Wilson Community. Need a motion?
How many we? How many?
Motion by Mitch Stone Sipher, second by William Abson, any discussion?
I just had one question, why was the map included in this, do you know? Because that's not the Wilson area.
It's my understanding that they had, uh, they had spoke with the, uh, the bus garage and they had, they had gone around and looked at the district. And they had gone by the map, they had gone by the map and the bus routes.
They need a geography lesson.
That, that was what, no, that's what I was told.
That's, that's okay, because when I looked at the map, I saw, um, Livingston students as well as Richmond students.
It's my understanding Mr. Pierce and, uh, and their, and their bus garage, they worked that out, so.
Any other discussion? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, item number five, uh, consider approval to purchase football stadium lotting from Cooper Loting Solutions through Sourcewell at two hundred and ninety-two thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars. Um, I asked Crystal to put this in here. Or was that in the email packet?
Uh, that one was in email.
That was, yeah, so that was in there as well. Uh, so, this was another one that we went through, uh, the Sourcewell, the Tennessee State. Well, before I go into that, let's, let's get a motion. Need a motion to approve the lot.
I make that motion.
Motion by Bruce Hudgens?
Second.
Second by Mitch Stone Sipher. Um, I'll go ahead and say it before discussion, so, uh, this is another one, we go through Sourcewell, it's a state-approved company that has all the vendors that we don't have to bid it. Uh, so I'm working with Mr. Chaney and the architects. Uh, again, based on the lead time, uh, we went ahead and, um, worked with this company. We had originally budgeted in the original for three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for lotting. Uh, shockingly, it come in two hundred and ninety-two thousand, which is much better. Uh, and this is with a fourteen-color, uh, different multicolored option, so if they want to do different colors and things over there as well. Uh, so this lotting will be on order as part of the bid that we sent out to the contractor. Basically, the contractor will be in charge of just installing the electrical portion of it.
Is this halogen type lighting or LED lighting?
LED, all LED, yeah. So, anything we can go through Sourcewell, don't have to be a, that speeds up, speeds up the process. Anything you need to say? Good. Alright, any other discussion, questions? Alright, if not, uh, we'll take a roll call, that's money.
Uh, William Abson.
Yes.
Dolph Stowe.
Yes.
Ricky Dodson.
Rick, are you still there?
Yeah.
Uh, we, we're asking for a vote on the lotting.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I vote yeah.
Mike Gilpatrick?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Bruce Hudgens?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Mitch Stone Sipher?
Yes.
And Wayne Taylor?
Yes.
Nine, four, zero, opposed. Motion passes.
Alright, uh, moving on to item number six, uh, consider approval of scoreboard purchase from NEFCO through Sourcewell pending, we received a quote, which we did yesterday. So, I asked Crystal to print that out and give it to you tonight. Uh, so if you will look, uh, the quote is in there and also the printout of what the scoreboard would look like and the design, uh, everybody should have that. So, um, I, let me get a motion in a second before we go into discussion on what William brought up, so. Need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Miss Alice Reed?
Second.
Second by Mike Gilpatrick, um. So, anybody else, I'll get to discussion, but William had brought up that when he was at T S B A on the hill a couple of weeks ago, uh, there was a company that had the scoreboard option for the video, uh, in the middle. Uh, so that's something that we talked to Mr. Chaney before the meeting about, that we, if we want to look into that option, uh, we can talk to NEFCO again. Uh, his recommendation, since we already put the bid out to the contractor, the bid, uh, we would order the scoreboard, it would be shipped to the school. The contractor's responsibility would be to install the scoreboard, hook up all the electrical components. Uh, so the recommendation would be for us to approve this tonight, then we meet with NEFCO again, look at the option for the LED, the display board. Uh, if we want to go that direction, then we can bring that back. If we decide not to, we can proceed with what we've already approved. If we decide to go with the video option, then we can just add that on there. Uh, you know, we've put three hundred thousand dollars contingency money in the whole project anyway, uh, when we bid that out, so, uh, you know, recommendation would be to approve this tonight, talk to NEFCO again, look at the video display board option, uh, see what the cost of that would be. Then we would come back and have that discussion after the fact. Mr. Chaney said he didn't believe that would be an issue as far as holding up the current bid, uh, or any issue with a contractor doing the installation of the scoreboard. Am I correct? You are correct, okay.
And I'd like to see us go with the video board because we can tie that in with our STEM, we can have, uh, education class out there doing different things on the field the night of the ball games. We'll be able to do, um, tons of different things and events that all the kids can participate in by using a video, uh, scoreboard instead of just the plain one we have here.
So, tonight we will be approving the eighty-two thousand for the, the base billboard. If we decided we wanted to come along and add a video feature to it later, we would just approve the difference between the eighty-two and whatever the difference was.
That's correct, because we'll work with NEFCO, the same company, the same rep, um, and that way there's no issues with the specs and the bid and the contractor work and, uh, you know, working through CO. That's correct.
We might mention also that this gentleman we talked to, uh, will come into the community and seek out sponsors to help, uh, defer some of the cost of the video score, uh, scoreboard.
Yeah, and through NEFCO as well, I mean, if you'll see the scoreboard, uh, the graphic, there's, uh, four slots at the bottom. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, I think they're three foot tall and a six foot wide, um, so those will be eligible for sponsorships at the school, quarterback club, whoever wants to go sell those. Uh, the good thing about those, um, if we send them where the sponsors is and their logo, um, I met with Mr. Melton, Coach Flat, and told him by March first, uh, if we had those, send them the file and the board would come already with the graphics on it, then all we would have to worry about is one year, two year down the road, the renewal process and having a local company to print the new logo. Or if they just wanted to renew it, it'd still be up there. Uh, but, you know, we'll give that option to the school. And this scoreboard does come with, um, like with the picture here, it does come with two new, uh, play clocks, uh, as well. And we also talked about, uh, during the call, the, uh, there's going to be an electronic mic, I'm sorry, electronic, a wireless microphone. That way, if they're holding any special events, graduation on the field, the wireless microphone could be taken, uh, to the field. Uh, all the sound system is built into the, uh, scoreboard. If you'll see the top portion where it says Livingston Academy, all the sound system is behind that. Uh, they told us on the call that there's going to be no problem hearing from one end to the other, that you'll probably hear it three streets over. Um, but, um, and also on the sidelines where they run the wire back and forth with the referee, that won't be there, it'll all be wireless, uh, up to date. So, uh, I think it'd pretty, be a pretty good option, then we can look at that, you know, video board on top of that and.
Mr. Chairman, let me just reiterate, since we've talked about the video board coming maybe later, having that discussion. The, uh, the sponsorships on the scoreboard as we have it, they're static, they're just graphic images, so there, nothing video on, on that current, current layout.
And I think to Mr. Gilpatrick, Mr. Abson's point, if we did the video option in the future, you know, during timeouts or halftime, and you can have local companies and put ads on there and they could pay for ads on the video portion as well, so.
Question? Yeah, I guess my, when you brought up about being static ad, what type of a material would we be looking at?
It's a, it's a vinyl.
Fine, okay.
And you could sell those, you could sell those sponsorships on an annual basis or three years at a time or five years, have each of us to.
Easily replaced?
Certainly.
Easily to be taken down and replaced?
Yeah, pretty simple process. And when you, and this scoreboard, we have budgeted in the last budget update on the pro, uh, the program, we put eighty thousand dollars in for scoreboard, this one coming in eighty-two. Uh, but if you look at the lotting and scoreboard combined, we saved thirty-three thousand on lotting, it's overspent two on the scoreboard, so we're still thirty-one thousand in the good when you look at both of them combined, so. Any other discussion? It's, uh, money also, so we'll take a roll call with this one.
Wayne Taylor?
Yes.
Mitch Stone Sipher?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Bruce Hudgens?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Mike Gilpatrick?
Yes.
Ricky Dodson, can you hear me?
Hey, Mr. Dodson, can you hear?
I couldn't ever hear what you were talking about online, I just, I just barely can hear it.
So, so we're talking about the scoreboard, uh, the bid was, or the quote was eighty-two thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Dolph Stowe?
Yes.
And William Abson?
Yes.
Nine, four, zero, opposed, motion passes.
Alright, uh, the last thing is special recognition, OCA, so Ms. Alender?
We just would like to congratulate all the recipients of tenure. Welcome Jody back, she's gone home. Welcome Jody McDonald back home. And, uh, say Merry Christmas to y'all. Thank you for everything you did.
Thank you, Ms. Alender. Alright, that's all for the meeting, this, okay, Dr. Holmes.
I, I have a couple of things that I'd like to, I'd like to add to this, uh, to recognize. I guess I'd just like to ask Debbie Roddy to come up and Melody Sadler to come up for just a minute, I'll, we'll just at least stand up there for a second. I want to kind of brag or highlight, you might say, our early literacy program here in Overton County. Debbie Roddy has, uh, been over our early literacy program here for several years and, and done a great job with that. She could, she can talk to, to you about it on and on and much better than I can. Um, but recently though, uh, the Governor's Early Literacy Foundation, they refer to that as GILF. We had, one of our teachers was selected to be on the Teacher Advisory Council for GILF. Uh, there was only twenty-one educators from across the state that were selected and Overton County had one, and I'm really tickled about that, I'm really proud. Uh, and, and of course it's a privilege to hear from A.H. Roberts, and we're really proud of you. Thank you for all that you do for our students every day, and thank you for going above and beyond and working hard to, uh, to, to do things to make things better for our students. Now, Ms. Roddy's going to talk to us for just a minute and say a word or two about Melody.
We are just so excited for you and thrilled, um, so congratulations for sure. And, uh, oh, this is such a big deal, it really, really, really is. Because, um, this foundation, we have partnerships with them and they have provided books, free, high-quality books to every kindergarten through third grade student in our county for the past two summers. And it came about because of the learning loss, you know, that third grade mark. Um, and, and Tennessee is recognizing this, so they are working really, really hard to try and not only support our teachers and our districts, but the families as well. Because we all know that's really where it starts. Um, so, with this foundation, they have to have an education advisory committee and this, this lady right here who, she is passionate about reading. And I just wanted to read to you all one thing that she wrote on her application. I could go on and on as, as Dr. Holman said, but I won't, I don't want. Um, because she not only can speak it, she does it every day. She does it every day in her classroom, and it's that passion and that joy and that relationship she builds with her classrooms, that's what comes shining through, I feel like, when she submitted her application. So, we're very proud of you. But anyway, she, the question is, or was, why are you interested in joining the Teacher Advisory Council? What makes you an excellent fit for this group? And she says, I love reading. I'm excited that we, as educators, can encourage both children and their families to dive into the books and provide them with opportunities to have access to materials that they may not have had. Working in a Title I school, I see many students who come from low-income households who do not have access to diverse materials. I would love to be a part of the selection committee that will be able to plant both seeds of learning and foster a desire for learning. So, she will be charged with helping the state choose, choose the books. And, um, I know you're excited about that.
I'm super excited about the talk.
So she get, tell them, tell them, you go in January, just tell them what you're gonna do.
Yes, we've been meeting once a month, uh, we started in November, uh, a great group of educators. We've been doing Zoom meetings, we get together in January in person, they've sent us all the literature, we've been reviewing it, and it's such an honor to work with these, um, men and women across the state and advocate for the kids. And know when you're gonna have, I think they sent ninety thousand books out last year. Uh, last summer, to know that you're gonna get that, I get to help pick those materials and I can find some literacy that may spark some interest in a kid and think, ooh, I want something different. So, I'm, I'm very excited about it, I love reading, so.
Let's give this Melody a round of applause. So, I have a little too tiny something to give you here from, uh, this is from Frank Walters at the Dairy Queen.
Thank you.
So, you can just, you can get the ice cream cake and take it to your room when you're not at work.
Hey, oh man, that's awesome, it's French day tomorrow.
This David, this David, tell you this, David.
Oh, my friend.
Come on, girl.
Oh, and if we say the teachers, all the K-three teachers, all of them got the books, same books.
Yes.
Good job, little group, thank you.
Just have one more small shout out. This is countywide, this is a wonderful thing. Uh, our internal schools audit report, we just received that. Uh, and it's, it's in your folders, it's the, the book, the blue booklet in your folders. I don't know how often this happens, but it has to be a wonderful thing. There were no findings at any school, uh, in our district, uh, for our books, for our audits. Not of one, no findings, uh, that's fantastic. Um, there is one little finding, it's, and, and everybody gets it, and it's called segregation of duties, and every, every school always gets that, especially in the smaller systems and the smaller, uh, schools. But overall, we had no findings, and that's just a wonderful thing. So, uh, congratulations to each one of our bookkeepers and the principals that worked so hard with them to make sure that the physical aspect of the school is run properly. So, that's a wonderful thing.
All right, so that's it, uh, at this point I'll take a motion, make a motion to adjourn, take a motion to adjourn. Patrick, second to Wayne Taylor, all in favor?
All right.
Oppose, needing to adjourn. All right, so on to the work session, anybody need to take a break, or just roll on? Roll on, all right, so we'll start the work session now.
I, I'd just like to say, I, I appreciate...
Sorry, Mitch.
I just appreciate Brandon Cross, Doug Smith, and Julia Poston for coming tonight and participating in these meetings. Uh, it, it, from, as a board member, it's truly appreciated, so thank you all.
Glad to be here, proud of these teachers, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so on the work session, first of all, football stadium update, uh, so, uh, we talked about the scoreboard, we talked about the lights. Uh, so we had a call with, um, Haley, uh, John, to kind of talk about the bid process. So, uh, I sent an email out to everybody, so just real quick, uh, the plans were finalized December sixth. There's a three-week waiting period from the local codes department in the city to review and the state fire marshal. Uh, so that'll be, uh, December twenty-seventh. Uh, we'll run it locally in the paper, twelve, twenty-seven, and one-four, those two weeks. Uh, so the bid will stay out for four weeks total. January eleventh at one P.M., there's a mandatory meeting for contractors at the football field. That way they can come, look at the field, ask questions. Uh, bids are due and will be open January the twenty-seventh at two o'clock here at the central office. At that point, we'll be awarding based on the lowest bid. Uh, at that point, hopefully things can get going and proceed that we've been waiting forever on, so, um, I don't think I left anything out on there. No, perfect, that's it. Um, so that's it on the football field. Uh, the next, uh, teacher salary, uh, discussion, so I'm sure a lot of y'all were here, uh, for the, uh, kind of meeting that Ms. Ollinger led up, kind of enlightened us on some, uh, district data, so I'll kind of turn that over to you and kind of update everybody.
Well, like, like Mr. Hayes said, most of you are able to be there, and I, I so appreciate you taking time to come. That's way above and beyond your obligation, so I really, really appreciate you coming. I also appreciate Ms. Crystal Nelson, and Ms. Sherry Webb, and Dr. Holman for helping to, to draw up the proposal. Do they have a copy of it, Mr. Hayes?
Do we, do you?
I didn't bring it one tonight.
We'll pass up, can I borrow that, Ms. Allison?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so for those that wasn't here, uh, for the meeting, you can review that real quickly.
Yeah, uh, I think Mr. Gilpatrick, Mr. Guy were the only ones not able to join us, and Mr. Hicks, and he's not with us tonight either, so, uh...
Have a copy of all the material.
Awesome, the proposal that came out of, of, of the meeting, I can't thank Crystal and Sherry and Dr. Holman enough for working on it, because it's a, I had asked TEA to do a salary analysis across the board of all of our steps on the salary schedule as compared to surrounding counties. And so they brought me back a finding from eight different counties. And we focused our discussions with the one that most closely matched what we were paying now, and the one that was the furthest away from what we were paying now. And then we put Clay County in there too, because they kind of feel like our, our neighbor. Um, there were other salaries that were considered, but they ran a comparison for me, and for each step on the salary schedule, they showed whether Overton was paying the same amount, or more, or less. And by and large, across the board, every step on the salary schedule was mostly that Overton was paying less. And so Crystal and Sherry and Dr. Holman took this information and applied it across the board and offered some increases to address these deficiencies across the board. I know when I first came to y'all about this issue, I was talking about the, the people at the top end, because that's what had really been brought to my attention based on the increases that had been put in place for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, and the top end had been left out because the state hadn't required it. But upon looking into the deficiencies across the board, this salary proposal came out of that that addresses the deficiencies across the board. And, uh, Mr. Hayes sat and figured out, it puts us really, really close to all of the counties, ahead of some of the counties, and within maybe five hundred dollars with, with the others. So this is a really competitive salary schedule, and it's something that I really hope that y'all will consider possibly putting on your January agenda and making it happen. This, this is what Overton County is, this is what we commit.
Anybody else have any feedback?
No, I'm, I'm wholeheartedly in favor of, of a pay raise. But what I, I would like to see, uh, like a, uh, three-year financial impact to the school district just laid out, so we can see in three years from now, how is this increase going to impact us down the road? How it's going to affect the budget?
Of the budget, yeah.
I did run that, but I'm, I have it in here tonight.
I just know the dollar amount, I think, was like seven-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars, uh, incremental to what we're paying out now. Uh, but at the end of the day, I mean, your, your biggest assets are employees, so I mean, that's...
I'm opposed to it.
Oh, absolutely, and, and, and I'm not, by no means am I saying that, and it's, um, you know, I think everybody would agree that, you know...
Well, and I think if you look back on budget years recently, there's been quite a bit of savings every year, and we have amassed a huge balance in the fund balance. When you are sitting on a big balance in your fund balance, it's hard to get your county officials to realize that we might need a little bit more tax dollars to come our way, because the county officials say, well, y'all are sitting on all that savings. But what you have in your savings cannot be used for salary and things, it can only be used for one-time expenses. So, for the last several years, the budget has saved a lot of money, and that money could have been spent towards salaries, and you wouldn't be sitting on such a huge balance. And I understand, you want to have a balance, you don't want to zero out the balance by any stretch of the imagination. But when you get it so far out of whack, that's an indication that there are savings in your budget that could be applied towards salary.
So...
Another thing that came out of the meeting, because, uh, Dr. Holman had been to, uh, a meeting for school superintendents recently, and that bottom line increase that was required this year, the minimum, it's probably going to go up again next year. So this is something that may have to be revisited, because when you bump one bunch, you really kind of want to bump everybody to keep everything spaced out so that people are working towards something. You want, you want your top end to feel just as appreciated as your beginning. So, these are things to, to kind of keep in mind as you work towards the future.
Uh, so I'll get with Crystal, and we'll kind of get that and email it out to everybody, that be okay? Uh, then, uh, we'll email that out, that way you'll have time to look at it, review it. Is anybody objected to kind of putting this on the agenda next month? And, uh, of course, at that point, we kind of need to decide, hey, are we going to do it now, or July with a new budget that we talked about, and kind of be thinking about that as well, uh, as far as start time and...
But do remember that come July, it might be outdated again.
Yeah, that, because if they change that minimum again, start goes from thirty-eight to forty, then you're two thousand closer than where you were today, so... So we'll, we'll get that out here in the next few days and send it out, that way you've got time to kind of look over it and think about it before the next month.
And just, I mean, from, from our perspective, we think this is awesome. This is, this is very competitive, and it provides something that that county can be proud of. So, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate the work. All right, uh, you got anything else? I, I got, anybody else have anything?
I, I got a couple of things, I've been cornered by a number, number of people who are trying to plan trips and vacations down the road, and of course some of them work in Putnam County, and they're wondering why we can't run our calendar out two years. Uh, and I understand, you know, if they're, if they're getting a place, making reservations are harder and harder to come by, so could we work on it, please? Take a look at it.
We could, we, we've been working for January's meeting.
Yeah.
We have the next one, for next year.
Maybe like a two-year at a time.
Yeah, because by the time you get to January, if you're looking at spring break or fall break, you know, options are limited.
I guess a lot of folks are doing vacation, you may reserve it while you're there for the next year.
Oh, yeah, mhm, mhm. And, uh, also, I, I would like for us to put on next work session, uh, taking a look at the, uh, possibility of a virtual school. Uh, we've been approached by Tech Trip, and we're gathering information. Tech Trip wants, uh, us to consider going statewide K-A for homeschool students, and this is not to take from our student base, but to give, uh, homeschoolers an option to, uh, have a quality, uh, uh, program available to them. Uh, we already are making about four-hundred thousand a year, uh, on the hundred Tech Trip students that we have. Uh, we might be able to increase that significantly, which could be applied toward teacher salaries. Uh, a lot of questions, we, we, we need, uh, to see, we, we talked about, uh, attendance, and how it might affect our roster and things like this. But I just, I'd like for us to at least look at that as an option, uh...
I'd be happy to answer questions.
Velika Davis is here, and she knows the rules through, uh, Tech Trip, and if you'd like to...
Sure, um, I don't know how much you even know about the program, um, but I'll give a little bit of my backstory. Um, I started homeschooling, um, we're from Overton County, me and my husband both, I'm married to Shannon Davis. And I know several of you, and I'm actually neighbors with this guy over here, but, um, anyways, we started our homeschooling journey because we were in California. Um, he's a lineman, we went out there to work, uh, literally to make money, because you can make a lot of money out there. And I wasn't sending my kid to school, so we started a homeschool journey there, we came back to Overton County, and man, like, the homeschooling community had really grown. Like, it, it, it was almost non-existent when we left. Um, fast forward, I did it independently, and it is costly. It costs, you know, th- those resources come from us, we don't get tax benefits for that. Well, I don't get to run into school, get my school books, you know, uh, that would be great, but we don't, so that, that comes out of, you know, our pockets. Then Tech Trip Academy, you know, what is this program? Um, and it was kind of wild, I ended up having a mutual friend with, uh, Brandy Below, which is over, over the program, that I had met in California, and I thought, wow, well, maybe that's meant to be. Uh, so we joined the program, a very apprehensive, you know, a lot of, you know, man, I don't want them, you guys in our business, you know, we're homeschoolers, right? So, but we'll maybe we can partnership with them, and it's been a wonderful fit. Um, it's provided resources for our families, um, that we would not normally have. Um, it provides checks and balances, which is an important thing for me. I want my kid to be where other kids are, if not above where other kids are. That was so important in our educational journey. Um, now I'm able to work for them, I do field trips for them, so we offer free monthly field trips. Um, a lot of homeschool families can't do that, they don't get to go to the zoo, they don't get to do these things. Well, Tech Trip Academy has provided those things for those families. We actually got to go to Nashville yesterday and did a field trip, um, to, to missions at Christmas, you know. There's several families that would never, ever get to do that, especially us homeschool families, because a lot of times we are one-income families. The mom stays home when we come to school. Um, so we've got to make those dollars stretch, so when Tech Trip can provide resources, and we have teachers we can reach out to, and if, you know, I'm having a trouble, you know, read with a reader, or say, hey, you know, my daughter's going through this, I have those resources. Um, so we get those resources, and in turn, we're considered, uh, the school students, so that money is also coming to you guys that has never been before. You know, this is money that's been sitting on the table from homeschoolers that now, with Tech Trip Academy, can come to the school system, like you said, you know. That's a good sizable amount of money for a hundred students. Right now, if y'all would consider going statewide, just, there are hundreds of students on the waiting list, hundreds of students around Tennessee that want to be in Tech Trip Academy. I am asked every single day, hey, are they coming to our county, White County, Clay County, Putnam County, uh, Pickett County, you know, all these counties. Um, Rome County is a partner, and they do do surrounding counties already, um, and they have a huge waitlist. So, this is, so the Overton County could be the first to do it. There's hundreds of thousands of dollars on the table waiting that you guys could grab up, because there's not another county that is willing to do statewide right now, they've not been approached about it. I've really been pushing for it, because it's been such a good program for our family, that I would love to see that bless other people in the state. Um, and like I said, the states of val- those checks and balances are there, they have, we have to test. Um, you know, homeschoolers, we don't have to test, you, you go through an umbrella school, and they don't ever have to do a test. Um, and some people want it like that, and those people don't have to be part of the program, but I think that that's a great thing for our community and our homeschool, homeschool community is to have that. So, um, I would love for that to be on the agenda at some point. Um, like I said, I think it's money to sit on the table, that could be taken and fit into budgets that, you know, could, could bless the school system, right here in Overton County, a lot, a lot of money, so.
I just have one question, we are funding according to our attendance, how do you do attendance?
So, um, they do what's called a learning log every two weeks, um, and as long as those learning logs are turned in on time, it shows the work that they do in each subject, uh, then they, then their attendance is a hundred percent. Um, I actually help work the report every two weeks, it gets pulled, and those that are not, missing learning logs are reached out by their homeroom teacher, they're reached out by me, and then, um, another lady named Denise. Um, so we're all the time saying, hey, maybe you didn't get to work in, very small, like, very small. I think there were ten families, and that's all the counties in Tennessee. So that's Putnam County, Overton County, Warren County, and Rome County. So there was maybe ten families that we had to contact of the hundreds of students, so very, very good attendance records.
And how are you doing the logs, is it based on computer work, that where they're logging on and doing the work that way, or how?
Some is different, you get to choose, you know, as, as a homeschool family, that's a big thing, it's like the curriculum that you want to use. I'm kind of a, you know, I want you to use paper and pencil, I want you to learn that, so I would take, I'll take a picture of what they're working on. Um, some people are using, say, Silvan Education, and they're doing a program through them, um, and, and that's computer work, so they would turn that in. Uh, my eighth grader does almost everything on Google Classroom, um, so I'm turning that in for my eighth grader. Um, so it really just varies, but there is some sort of, you know, it's either something written out, or a picture, or a video, or something showing what they have been working on in each subject.
I think one thing we're concerned with Velika is how this would impact our test scores. As I understand it, Alice, we would have to establish a virtual tech academy, and the ADM would be counted through that. We would get to keep a part of the, of the ADM, we pay Tech Trip a part of the ADM. Tech Trip furnishes them with far more resources than, than, in my years' experience as a tenant supervisor and being over homeschools, there weren't a lot of good options.
No, I mean, some people were using school books from twenty, thirty years ago, they were using those, you know, like maybe their parents had homeschooled, and now, you know, we're getting up-to-date things, we're getting, you know, if you need a new laptop, we're able to get that. Like, that's such a huge, huge thing for our education. Um, as far as testing goes, I do know, um, if, if you did the virtual school, that that would be separated from... Um, as far as testing goes, I do know, um, if, if you did the virtual school, that that would be separated from the other test scores, you know, from the, the fellow school students. So that would be separated, um, so that way you wouldn't bring that number down. Um, but honestly, our test scores have been great, you know, most parents that homeschool, we do because, I mean, that's my life, those are my kids, I pour into them. Um, I want them to test just as well as anyone else, like I said, if not more, or bet, you know, better. You know, we're picking the best parts and, and trying to teach them. Um, we've already been practicing our T cap, because the, the practice tests are out there, so, um, I think, I just don't think test scores are going to be a, an issue. I seen some of them last year, they were great.
But the scores would count for the, for Overton County?
Well, if you did the virtual school, then they would be separated, like, Overton County, and then the virtual would be-
Well, if we did a school, we'd have a school number, and that school would be part of our campus.
That school would have a-
So that would have affected-
As, as far as, as far as I know.
So if you have students that are in ninth through twelfth, and especially eleven, twelfth grade, that decide, hey, I'm dropping out, I'm eighteen, does that affect graduation rate?
Okay, well, that's the thing, it's only through eighth grade right now, and that's something we would love to see is high school. Uh, because it's, we're servicing through eighth grade, and there's nothing beyond that, I have an eighth grader, so next year, I'm like, you know, I've had all these resources and all this help, but now, when it really gets expensive, um, you know, we don't have, we don't have anything, so that does not exist. Um, if it were to go statewide, that would be so many more students, so a bigger pool of students that would say, okay, we want to do high school. Because that number would, not everyone would say, y'all want to do that for high school, because it's more rigorous. It would be an accredited program, they already do in Idaho, so this is not something that would be recreating, well, they're going to do it in Indiana next year for high school. So this is something Tech Trip is already doing, um, so they would know how that process would work. Um, it is an accredited program with high school, um, they have a really good retention rate. Janet Cox gets you that information as far as what the retention rate has been for Idaho. Um, they have a great graduation rate as far as I know, yeah.
If we did nine, twelve, it would count on our graduation rate, because, uh, that's actually from ninth grade four. So there, there's a lot of questions to be answered, but there's some potential-
And I would be happy if you wanted to get questions to me, and I could get those answers and present those in January, whenever you would want those, or ahead of time, I could email those out.
If, uh, if y'all want to, we can put it on the work session for January, and that way you've got time. I think there's a lot of people, I know me, like, sitting there and thinking about, hey, open it up to the state, that kind of brings up a whole different issue versus our county.
Well, you could limit, you still could limit the number, you could say, okay, we'll do, this year let's do five hundred, next year we'll do a thousand, or something like that, you could still limit it. Um, I know a, a, a testing question had come up, okay, will they go into the local school? Because, you know, it's going to be very similar to, say, like Tennessee Connections, or K twelve, you know, something like that, where they have to do testing. Um, so Tech Trip would actually provide mobile testing, like they do in the other states, they come in and test. Um, right now, in Overton County, we have to go into the school system, we have to say, hey, I have a Tech Trip student, you know, I'll call Rickman and say, hey, I'm going to test. And that's fine and great and good, um, but I'm also sticking my students in a classroom with kids that they've never seen. You know, they're the new student now, and I just think that that makes their test scores not as good. Like, if you're nervous, and you're in a new place, you're a new student, so I think having the mobile testing and being with other students that, you know, are homeschooled, or that you might know or might be your buddy, would be, would make those test scores better. I know Putnam is able to do that, I actually helped with the T cap testing last year with Putnam, um, for, you know, around about three hundred students. Um, they are able to do it in Vottle, because they have a separate fielding, um, and it was all, you know, homeschoolers that came in, and, and they had great, you know, in comparison to the state, the state overall, all of a sudden, you know, didn't do very well with the-
That was another question we had, like, if you bring in the student in, all the other kids are going to be going, oh, you know, who's this, and so on.
Well, and we've done that, we've done that since, yeah, we've done that since the program, the, one year we didn't have to, but those are-
Here in Overton County, though, we have, we always tested those in a, in a separate group.
They did not do that this year, they said there were too many of us, they would not let us test separately. So they were put in a classroom with their children, and that's, that's-
Always prior, to my knowledge, I mean, we'd never done that prior to, of course, I wasn't there when they were doing this year, but-
Yes, that has been the case, usually at the library or-
Put those students in with the regular classroom, because we didn't know how it would affect them.
They were definitely put in this year.
Yeah, they were, and, and like I said, it's not that I'm saying, hey, I don't want to do that, but also, you're like, hey, I'm the new kid now, and everybody's staring at you, and I just think that that would make me nervous, especially as someone, maybe this is their first time ever testing, so we want testing to be a positive experience. So I know Putnam County was a positive experience, we brought snacks for them, you know, I know teachers do that, so we did that as standing in, as teachers, we brought snacks for them. Made them feel comfortable, they know me, because I'm at, you know, I do the field trips with them, so they're comfortable that they know me. Um, I called each school system this year and asked that very question that Mr. Holman was talking about, about being separated, and they said there are too many students, so they just could not do that. Uh, because of staffing, I understand that, you know, you're not paying on twenty kids coming in, so.
At Rickman, they put all the homeschoolers into one classroom in each grade, so they weren't scattered throughout. But it was, I, I would say it was tough on the homeschoolers and tough on the other kids too, uh, in that room, because all of a sudden, there's new faces that they've never seen.
The other kids are then fascinated by the new, new students.
Not really, it, it can be a distraction, so, um, if anything, uh, it's just having somewhere else to test would be amazing. I would help facilitate that, I can proctor, I have a degree, I have several people that would be willing to volunteer, um. I mean, I would love to make that happen, I, I know our local library said that they would be happy to host that, I mean, I don't know, I, I would love for something like that to happen. I think test scores all around would just be better for Overton County.
So if y'all, we'll put it on the work session for January, and just, if you got questions, start writing them, think about it.
Yeah, I can get them, please, if you're going to-
All the negatives, all the positives, and let's just line them up side by side and see. This was not a setup, I didn't know Velika was going to be here, but, uh-
No, I just, since y'all were meeting, I thought, you know, I'm just going to go, and, um, you know, I've been trying to kind of talk through Brandy, and I think that she's talked to you guys, and I thought, you know, I'm just going to go, I'm Overton County, I'm from Overton County, my husband's from Overton County, and we love Overton County, I, I mean, my sister-in-law teaches in Overton County, I have, it's not that we don't love the school system, it's just what we have decided to do, um, you know, as a family. And, hey, next year, who knows, you know, it could be, it's not like I'm a homeschooler, I said, or, or whatever, I was, I went to A H Roberts, I love school. Um, it's just that we've decided to do that, you know.
We'll get the questions, and everybody be thinking about it, should I go back to Mr. Gilpatrick, we'll put it on the work session, say, thank you. Anybody else?
Um, real quick, I don't want to talk a lot, I'm going to shut up. Um, so soccer, just an update for everybody, uh, so the soccer, uh, team, they've got a current, uh, small storage building outside, right now inside their concession stand. Uh, they contacted Dr. Holman and Mr. Melton, so, uh, just as more of F Y I, uh, they're going to move that building somewhere else on the facility, possibly give it to tennis. Uh, then they're going to put another kind of storage building right next to the concession stand, it's going to match the current colors and everything. So if you see anything going on over there, uh, just want to let everybody know that's what they're going to be doing. Uh, J R O T C update, so, uh, I met with Dr. Holman, uh, Ms. Riddle, and Mr. Melton today, she's in the process of doing that application. Uh, there's a lot of questions that came up, one about classroom size, where's my classroom, do I have an office area, do I have an area for drill? Tons of questions that come up, it's kind of more than kind of what we thought would be on there. Uh, so we all got together today, and, uh, they, they rate you on a point system based on what accessibility you have in the school. Uh, one thing is, uh, about being Title One, if you're Title One, you're forty percent of your total score. Uh, which, good news, bad news, good news, Title One, bad news is, with ESER this past year, everybody eat free. So, a lot of people that went on for Title One, or the free and reduced lunch, they didn't even fill out the free and reduced lunch, where that's where you get your Title One numbers from. So, uh, they're having a struggle and trying to figure out, hey, we need to get these people signed up so we get true data on their Title One number. I think they're about sixty students away from meeting the Title One criteria. Uh, if that doesn't happen, possibly they can lose Title One next year, which that's forty percent of J, J R O T sis, uh, J R O T C score. But not only that, I mean, future funding and everything could be affected by that. So, anything you all can do to kind of help spread the word, uh, even though they're eating free because of ESER, everybody is, uh, it's still important to fill out that free and reduced to get that Title One number. Then, um, just something to be thinking about too, I mean, we've talked about it in the past, and with Williams' kind of support staff raise we did, you know, the bus drivers was affected a little bit last year. Uh, I talked to Mr. Mosley, he had a bus driver hired about a week and a half ago, the day they were going to bring him on to do his paperwork. He called him and said, I'm going to Pickett County, they're paying me eighty-five a day instead of sixty-five starting now. So just something to be thinking about, I mean, that's not going away either, and can continue to be, uh, a kind of a thorn in the side, I guess, as far as pay structure. So that's, I just want to update everybody on that, so, you got anything? Alright, I'll shut up, so. Alright, if that's it, see y'all next month, so, thank you all.